Let us pray. Dear kind heavenly Father, we do thank you for bringing us together again for the business that you have afforded us to. We just thank you for today being Veterans Day. We thank you for those who are serving, who have served, and those who are still missing in action. Oh God, we just ask it to people, their families, and those who are still struggling with post-traumatic stress after having been in wars, just be grateful because they have given a service to this country for our freedom, and we ask that you never forget them and let them know, their families know, that they are always remembered. As we go through our meeting, help us to make decisions that are pleasing on your side. Whereas your blessings upon every council member, our administrator, and his staff. In Christ's name we pray, amen.
To the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes to the agenda?
Chairman, there was one clear foul mistake from the agenda that was mailed out on Friday. I erroneously put that second reading for the Project Peanut ordnance had been deferred until January, but it's deferred until September.
Yes, sir. I have a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda and the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I have a motion to approve our minutes from our meeting held on October 28th, 2025.
Move for approval, second.
If we move this second, then we approve our minutes. Are any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Approval of the minutes. Land use matters, RZ 2512.
If you don't mind, I'm going to present from there where the screen is.
Yes. RZ 2512, or 2512 is at 2385, 2395, and 2415 Cootaway. The applicant, Ms. Amelia Taylor, is the property owner and serves on three properties. It's about 4.69 acres from agricultural conservation to residential multifamily. This is the property in question. It's actually a piece of property that is off a private road, off a private road, out between Clermont Road and Scales Road. This property, as is the surrounding property, is owned agricultural conservation. It is a heavily wooded tract. Right now, all of the access, right-of-ways to it are not cleared of trees, so there aren't actually roads established to it. They're merely paper streets at the time.
Excuse me. Does it not have any frontage on the scale further?
It does not. This is a piece of property that's only accessible from two private roads, one of which has not been constructed yet. That would be Cootaway. The applicant's requesting this rezoning to residential multifamily because they would like to build a tiny house community on the property under common ownership. The agricultural zoning district doesn't allow that. The only district that would in either the city or county really is residential multifamily. It is unknown whether public water service is available to the property because it does not have frontage on a public road, but it is in the high health service district. And we do know that public sewer service is not available to the tract. No site development or subdivision plans have been submitted or reviewed to date. If the request for rezoning is approved, the applicant is going to have to submit site plans and a full review and approval we require prior to land disturbing activity on the site. There are some concerns that this property is a substantial area of wetland. There would have to be a formal wetland delineation done on the property. From a development standpoint, this does raise concerns for planning staff. Because there is no public sewer available to this property, it has to be served by onsite septic. That would be at the discretion of DES for permitting those. And it is highly likely if this wetlands map is correct that there are very limited areas that may park on the property. In terms of rezoning actions, we look at what the comprehensive land use plan says. This is in the rural development planning area. The subject site is not located in proximity to any significant residential enclaves where its development would be considered an extension of the rural village pattern. While it's unclear whether the property can be served by public water, we do know it can't be served by public sewer. So the comprehensive plan is not supportive of residential multifamily in this instance. From a transportation standpoint, the parcels are accessed by a series of private dirt rides, drives. Cootaway and Coon Ridge Road are both private. Cootaway has not been constructed to date. The distance from the nearest portion of the combined property to a public right-of-way is approximately two tenths of a mile. The site's lack of public road frontage is a significant concern for development of additional residential units, and it doesn't have clear access for first responding vehicles, which would increase the burden on public services to provide support in both emergency and non-emergency situations. Planning Commission did recommend denial of this request. It is incompatible with 2040 comprehensive future land use plan. There's a lack of public water sewer service availability to the subject property, and there's some significant environmental considerations, possible wetlands, and the lack of public roadway access to the property that led to this recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions on Ms. Rudman?
Yes, Ms. Rudman, if they had constructed that proposed road, would that have made a difference with your, with the planning commission's recommendation?
First and foremost, the comprehensive plan doesn't support residential multifamily in that area. So there's a couple of things that I think the most egregious issue on this property is the access, but the comp plan doesn't support it. It's not an extension of the rural village pattern. Putting residential multifamily out in this area is also another issue. And the fact that there's no public sewer service that would support the kind of density that RMF allows is also another concern.
Yeah, and I understand that. I was just looking and thinking about, you know, how times have changed over time.
Yeah.
And needs.
Yeah.
And I'm just looking at it from the perspective that even if it were approved, it would be limited places on that, out there where they would actually be able to place a dwelling, one of those tiny houses anyway. And for that reason, I wouldn't try to block them from being able to do it if they were able to, you know, provide that driveway, that Cootaway that they are proposing. And of course, they would have to meet, you know, the wetlands mitigation, like you said.
As it stands, it's actually three separate developable parcels. So even if this rezoning was not successful, they can build something on each of those three lots.
Okay, well then that sounds doable.
You won't build one on the middle lot?
Again, this is, this is the National Wetlands Inventory. This is not, this is not the actual wetland situation. This is just an indication to us that there may be wetlands present. A formal delineation and site analysis would have to be done on the property.
Right, considering everything though, with them still having the possibility of developing three different little, what, you know, parcels, not parcels, but dwellings out there, that's probably, and this my limited thinking on, you know, development. I think that's probably going to be about all the shit they'll be able to do anyway because of the no septic, no sewer. So that means that they're going to have to find some place that will perk, and then no water. Water has to be a certain distance from the septic tank.
It's in the high health service district. We are not certain whether there is water line down Coon Ridge Road to Cootaway, but I would say that there's definitely not water service on Cootaway at this time. So even if it were to be extended, there would be the expense of that.
Ms. Washington?
Ms. Rudman, was there any discussion about the non-accessibility for emergency services?
There was.
And what was that discussion like?
We actually, this request was deferred at Planning Commission about four times, trying to work with the applicant to help her understand what she could do with the property without rezoning it. Because we thought it would have possibility for her to maybe do like a campground facility where she had park model RVs there that wouldn't necessitate a rezoning action. Every time we reached out to her to schedule a meeting, she either didn't respond or she rescheduled and then didn't come.
So, and this is not directed to you, but for capital members, with all the work we've done with private roads, trying to make sure people have access, there's a project that is attempting to come in where access is not available, that is just not something I'm going to support. So let me just put that out.
Do they have to pay that rule?
A lot's already exist, so they would at least have to cut something in to get to it. I'm not a banker, but I imagine that financing would be required for any sort of development. So I suspect that any financing vehicle would compel some level of access. Whether it meets the expected minimum standards that the county would like to see for an unpaved road, I couldn't answer that.
I'm concerned, has any commission? No. And they said they asked you to not meet with y'all?
No, sir.
And do they have the estimates for the sales room or the access to get onto Cootaway?
We raised that question with the applicant. She said she could get them, but at the rezoning stage, that wouldn't be something that we would be compelling proof of.
What's the pleasure, council?
Move for denial.
Second.
My motion and a second to deny first reading. Are any discussions?
I just want to also let her know that if she decides to do something with, like what you said, that she, there's a possibility, let her know about the rural roads that, the work that we've done with it, and if she establishes something, she would have to be responsible for her road. And yeah, that, that understanding needs to be prior to that, unless it definitely won't be accepted.
Mr. Chairman, I will ask a question. Is the applicant here?
No.
Is the applicant not even here?
No, sir, she is not.
We have a motion and a second to deny first reading. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading is denied. Next item on the agenda, RZ 2517, Ms. Rudman.
I'm going to continue standing back here in hopes that it mitigates some of the feedback. This is a request of 1650 South Ginyard Parkway. The applicant, Mr. Redmond Smith, is here to speak on the app of the request as the property owner. This is to rezone two parcels that is approximately 2.22 acres from agricultural conservation to heavy industrial. The property is on the south side of Ginyard Parkway, almost adjacent to Rainier Drive, which accesses the county recycle center. It is situated between a residential subdivision and an existing church. The property is, got a significant area of wooded property around it, and to the back of it, to the east is the church, and to the west is a 16-lot residential subdivision. It is owned agricultural conservation, as is all the property around it. For some case history, in 2020, the applicant purchased the property with the intent of developing a car stereo retail sales and installation use on the site. That necessitated a rezoning action, which was RZ 2010, to reclassify it from AC to general commercial. That request was denied at second reading by county council after hearing from the neighboring property owners. As I said, it's on the south side of South Ginyard Parkway, US 521, near the intersection with Jimmy Street and Rainier Boulevard. The parcels are the remainder of a 30-acre tract that was created by a division of an estate in 1953. That tract was then further divided into 16-lot residential subdivision called Martin Subdivision via multiple flats in the 1970s. So the area that you see in blue is actually that residential subdivision. The red is the subject site, and then the remainder of that 30 acres is highlighted in yellow. This is a perfect example of why the National Wetlands Inventory is just an indication. When we first did the review of the site, we did have some concerns about the wetland status. At the meeting at Planning Commission, the applicant did say he had already had a wetlands delineation done on the property and that it was found not to have wetlands that were jurisdictional or non-jurisdictional that were going to influence development. So this is what the site looks like. And this is the information submitted from the wetlands delineation. They looked at multiple sites on the property. This is how the property looks today. There is a drainage canal on the side. That's what you see in the number two picture. And then here's the remainder of the property photos. The 2040 land use plan has this in a priority commercial corridor in the suburban development planning area. The goal of the priority investment planning area, which is what the priority commercial corridor is, is to identify and direct and concentrate new development opportunities in a more orderly way. We also have some green infrastructure recommendations as policy in the comprehensive plan, which specifically say where there are areas of green infrastructure, such as wetlands or flood plain or drainage canals, that we would develop or expect development to work with those items on the property to try and minimize impact to them. The fact that the applicant has actually gone through the steps to determine the extent of wetlands on this property is very helpful and has identified places where development should probably be separated from. Additionally, this section of South Ginyard Drive was widened to five lanes in the mid 2000s. I'm going to have to take my glasses off to read this. Pardon me. And it was to provide better transportation and connections to promote industrial growth in the nearby areas, while commercial zoning in line with policies, is in line with the policies of commercial corridor areas, the sites also in the broader suburban development planning area, where the goal is to scrutinize and manage existing development patterns while providing locations for new commercial and industrial development. The existing development pattern in this area being between an existing single-family residential subdivision and an established church use on the property does make the possibility of adding industrial to this particular area something that should be weighed carefully. Because of its unique and odd shape, the applicant also acknowledged that developing on this property in compliance with development standards could be complicated, so he actually had some schematics done to see what would fit on the property. There are about three different options of different building styles that could actually fit on the parcel and meet setbacks based on the adjacent uses. And all that being said, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I'm going to move a first reading, because I'd like to see if he actually talked with labor this time, the second reading. And then if he didn't, he knows what's going to happen, so that's my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Hearing none, first reading is approved. RZ 2519.
RZ 2519 is at 501 Bell Road. The applicant is Robert Drago, the property owner. This is to request, request rezon a single 2.59 acre parcel from residential 15 to agricultural conservation. This is the property in question. It's at the corner of Old White's Mill Pond Road and Bell Road. It is currently an undeveloped parcel of land. It is owned residential 15. It is part of a subdivision that was established back in the 1970s. The applicant's actually requesting to rezon this property to facilitate the placement of a single manufactured home on the property. They're not permitted in the R15 district, but they are permitted in the requested AC district. It is part of the Ranch Lane Ranchette subdivision, which largely contains site-built ranch-style homes. Based on our cursory review, it does not appear that the subdivision has any restrictive covenants that would prohibit the placement of a manufactured home. This property is in the rural development planning area under the 2040 land use plan. This area is intended to support low-density residential development and select non-residential and agricultural uses in a relaxed regulatory environment. Manufactured homes and single-family homes are appropriate in the rural development planning area, and so the 2040 comprehensive plan is actually supportive of an AC designation for this particular parcel. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. It was a unanimous recommendation. Ms. Drago did say at the meeting that she has acquired this property as well as two other properties on that side of the road, and she has recently purchased a house across the street. It is her intention that her children go on these properties, and the particular daughter that she wants to give this tract to would like to put a manufactured home on the property. I have heard from several adjacent property owners since the public notice went out, and I have shared that information with them. I do expect that we will probably see people here at the public hearing at the next meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Blue for a reading.
Second.
On RZ 2519, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading of RZ 2519.
Please feel the neighbor.
RZ 2519 is approved. RZ 2516.
There have been no changes since second reading.
For a reading.
Second.
Remove the property second, and then we have third reading on RZ 2516. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. All opposed? Third reading is approved. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number 251038, Mr. Bryant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, there's a little piece of property on the bypass that's owned by Suffolk County, and the Department of Transportation would like to use that temporarily while they do work on the bridge that crosses over North Main Street beside the Ford dealership there. I'm going to ask the clerk if she can pull up maybe the arrow photo. There you go, the arrow photograph is good. So you see the parcel, it looks sort of like a triangle, and the tip of the triangle to the west, it's oriented to the north, but to the west, it's just the tip of that that SC DOT wants to use temporarily, and they want to pay $5,000 to the county to use it while they do the construction of the bridge, just to the ordinance.
Remove the property second, we have first reading, 251038. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? First reading is approved for ordinance number 251038. Per request of the company, I'd like to motion to the first second reading on Project Peanut. Make a motion for this ordinance, 25, that's 1036. Remove the property second, and then we have first second reading on ordinance number 251036. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Second reading is deferred. Ordinance number 251037.
Mr. Chairman and council, as we went over in the last meeting, state law requires that we update the business license class schedule every two years according to work done by the South Carolina Municipal Association, and that is appendix B to our business license ordinance. So when that's going to be done, it's going to have an impact on the revenue if we don't change the rates for each additional class. So it's going to propose that we change the rates in an attempt to make the whole change revenue neutral. So you recall that we, county council discussed this in the fiscal tax and property committee briefly, and it appeared to be the consensus of that committee to use these proposed rate change under appendix A. So that's kind of where it stands.
I just, I'm worried, yes. There was a piece of information that the county attorney shared with us concerning the columns. What was the column on the line that you gave some preference?
That's the preference. Rate change, column far right, proposed rate change.
Yes, okay, and so that motion, they gave that.
Yes, thank you.
We have a motion, that is second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Second reading. Business license amendment is approved. Coming out to committee reports, land use committee meeting needs.
The land use committee met this afternoon, and we discussed the proposed landscape ordinance amendments, and coming out of committee with approval, we're moving forward to planning commission.
Mr. Bryant, second.
Yes, sir.
Fiscal tax and property.
It came out of committee.
We have a motion and a second to send it on to the planning commission, coming out of committee, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Fiscal tax and property committee meeting was held, all members present. We received information from our county attorney on two items, which were on the agenda tonight, which we have since disposed of. Next item on the agenda is reports from county council members on other meetings, trainings, and accomplishments.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
I attended the NWAACP Freedom Bank with on Friday. It was very well received. We had also speaker, also in attendance was our council member, Washington, as well. He was on program, but we had a good turnout for that banquet, and I wanted to thank everyone for your support. Also, this morning, we had the privilege of being on the, on the float this morning or the golf course, card this morning for the Veterans Day parade. And so I wanted to, I was confident with the chairman, and it was a good turnout. It was cold, brisk weather, good for your soul, good to get your blood moving in the cold. So it was a good turnout. So to all our veterans that may watch this, we thank you for your service. We thank the families of veterans. As a child of a veteran family, I know the sacrifice that our families make for those that gave the ultimate sacrifice and did not return for their service for the freedom that we enjoy to those families that have lost a loved one. Our hearts go out, and we thank you for your service.
Thank you. Any others?
Do we have any veterans present?
Who's that? Bring your attention to the monthly reports, which are in your packet. Coming out to the county administrative report, Mr. Mixon.
Over and forth, sir, thank you.
Coming out, public comments, citizens may speak for up to three minutes. All comments directed through the chairman. This time, it's with comments only, no questions or discussion. Anyone wishing to speak to council, please proceed to the podium and state your name for the record. Hearing none, public comment is closed. Mr. Chairman, we may move to adjourn with this caveat for next meeting, the HAVI people are here during our meeting. All right, any discussion, thank you, thank you.
And, and Mr. Chairman, I just brushed over, but I- And, and Mr. Chairman, it's kind of brushed over, but I just want to thank our two veterans for their service. Councilman Washington and our county administrator for the time.
Attorney.
I mean, I'm sorry, our county attorney, I'm sorry, for their service. Yes. I don't want to brush that over, and I'm a mother of a veteran, okay? Thank you.
Motion, second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Your turn. With the night.